It's one o'clock and we will call this regular city commission meeting to order. This is the first regular city commission meeting of the city of Ormond Beach in August, and we are in commission chambers. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in this evening by police captain D.W. Smith and our airport manager, Stephen Licklider. They've served as our greeters tonight. If you need a card to speak for audience comments or on any of the agenda items, you can see the clerk up front or the recording secretary, either way. And I want to go ahead and introduce the folks who are up in front of you tonight. To my right, your left is Taylor Lockhart, the recording secretary. City clerk, Susan Daederer. Our commissioner from Zone One, Lori Talland.
Good evening, everyone.
Commissioner from Zone Two, Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone.
To my left and your right, our commissioner from Zone Three, Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Then next is our deputy mayor and Zone Four Commissioner, Harold Bryley.
Good evening, everyone.
City manager, Joyce Shanahan. There she is. Joining us, an assistant city manager, Claire Whitley. And then city attorney, Randy Hayes. Way, way to my left and way, way to your right is our police captain, Chris Russe, and fire chief, Howard Bailey. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. If you would at this time, please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation given by Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we gather here today to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. And we ask your blessing and guidance on our city leaders as they make these decisions in behalf of our community. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience remarks. At this time, we'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes, and tonight we start with Ed Bobinski.
Good evening. My name is Ed Bobinski. I live at 30 Melrose Avenue. I'm here tonight to talk about code enforcement, and it is something that I have talked to my commissioner, Travis Sargent, several times, and I have to say it's been very helpful so far. I want to start out by saying I really appreciate the work that everyone in the city and the county does, everything. It's a very nice place to live, been here about eight years. Anyway, code enforcement. It seems like we've hit a bump in code enforcement. I've done a lot of research, I listened to what my neighbor said at the last meeting. What they said is 100% accurate and on the money. People are being threatened, harassed, because they report code violations. I saw it today. It was in full display, two doors up from me. The code enforcement officer stood there for 20 minutes, and I'm going to use, I'm not going to say anything other than the F-word was said more than you would see it on dead to me. It was F-this, F-that, and constantly berating the person who reported him, constantly. She has no right, she has no right, she has no right. But let me say this, that also happened to me and my wife, not as bad, but when we first moved in here, somebody had a boat parked on our property, and it became an issue when he was asked to move. Eventually, it happened. Five years, six years later, the boat's still there. I don't blame the code enforcer, but I'm not making a complaint. Sheriff Chitwood said not too long ago, assume everyone is armed. It's not fair. And the people who are in my neighborhood who are making the complaints are senior citizens. They're in their 70s, I'm in my 70s. I'm not going head-to-head with anybody. It's just, it's not right. I make a suggestion that we really think about having a citywide campaign of adhering to the code. It's a beautiful code, it makes a lot of sense. It really, it maintains a beautiful city. The people who built and developed this city had a good idea when they had 25 mile-an-hour zones, you can park your car on your lawn, you can have a storage container, whether or not you paint it, or it has a cowl on it, or you put leaves on it. We have to have strict code enforcement, and I do appreciate what Travis Sargent has done with us so far. Okay, my time is up, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Shelley Bobinski.
I also want to say that Ormond Beach is a great city, and we really enjoy living here, but I do have two concerns I want to address. As I understand it, the purpose of ordinances is to promote, improve the health, safety, and welfare of citizens, they benefit us all. Statute 162 changes the way that ordinance violations are reported, pitting neighbor against neighbor. Senior citizens or any citizens cannot and should not be responsible for either approaching or publicly reporting a neighbor for ordinance violations. Hoardings are mental health issues, antisocial behaviors is mental health issues, anger is an issue. Our neighborhood has experienced what happens when citizens have gone through the proper channels of reporting, anger, intimidation, and threats. It happened today on Melrose Avenue. When Sheriff Chitwood says you have to assume everyone has a gun, why would anybody want to approach that situation that could be potentially dangerous? Anything can happen anywhere. It is encouraging to see some steps being taken to clean up some of the code violations on our streets, thank you Travis, but there's more to be done. My other concern is traffic and the disregard for these laws. Cars and trucks continue to speed up and down our streets despite 25 mile-per-hour signs. Vehicles often run to stop signs, red lights, and parking lots. My husband and I walk or bike throughout the week, and we see it everywhere. Again, saying or suggesting anything often results in aggressive responses. It's happened to many of us, it's happened to me and my husband. Ordinances and laws need to be enforced, complacency makes it worse. We all deserve to live in a clean, healthy, and safe environment as I'm sure the planners of Ormond Beach did. Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas Young.
Douglas Young, I live at 34 Melrose Avenue. I'd like to thank the leaders of the city, especially Travis, for getting the homeless camp cleaned up on Orchard Street. It was there, it was nasty for a long time, it's gone, it's cleaned up. Thank you guys for being positive.
Elaine Davis.
Good evening, I'm Elaine Davis, I live at 76 Melrose. I'm the one who wrote the complaint that all the threats came down on. And today, your code enforcement officer got his behind handed to him for no reason. It was uncalled for, I thought an officer should have been called out, and I thought the gentleman should have been arrested, in all honesty. But it was just more threats. I was here two weeks ago and told you, I was getting text messages that were threatening me, because people are parking their cars all over the grass, there's garbage and trash and debris in people's lawns, there's trailers, there's boats, there's motorhomes. It's all code violation. I'm just asking, can we give the guys their authority back, like the code enforcement guys? If you blatantly see it, why can't you just handle it? The neighbor shouldn't have to do it, you know? So that's all I'm asking, is that give them the authority back to roll right up your driveway if you got an RV that's been sitting there for two months. Write a note, say, hey, can't be here, you're in violation, get it corrected. But we don't do that anymore. It has to be somebody make a complaint, and then by law, you guys give out the name and phone number. And today was ugly, it was ugly. I'd walk down my block on the other side of the street, another person that's on the code violation, and I would yell that, don't walk in front of my house, walk out in the street. I'm going to walk on my block, I'm going to walk in my neighborhood. I've been here 20 years, they don't scare me, but they're going to scare somebody, and I think that's why you don't get a lot of phone calls and a lot of issues, and that's why the neighbor is living next door to the junkyard that we're all talking about, because they're afraid. So just give code enforcement their authority back. Thank you.
Tate Brock.
Hi, I'm Tate Brock. I live at the corner of Willmet and Ridgewood. My address is 357 North Ridgewood Avenue. I just have a few simple ideas, thoughts, facts. Ormond is not the same place it used to be when Willmet was designated as a feeder road, and I would just like to suggest some major traffic calming measures for Willmet going forward. This year, you've cut down all the trees on the easement sides of the road, I want to suggest that they come back in, you know, the trails have trees and roundabouts to slow the traffic down, the roads are narrower, they feel uncomfortable for speeders. I'd just like to suggest something similar for Willmet. And I'd also like speed humps to be reconsidered. We've seen it in major cities where feeder roads have been given speed humps for extraneous reasons, and I think that given where Ormond is and where people's minds are and how chaotic people are, that we have a good argument for speed humps. And then I just want to say that school starts soon, and God bless us, because it's a mess. And if you can spare any individual, police officer, to come and visit us that day to direct traffic, save lives, that'd be terrific. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then Dylan Kalkhurst.
I'm Dylan Kalkhurst, and my company is GiveBacks. At GiveBacks, we believe everyday dining and shopping can be a force for good. Wouldn't it be cool if a donation went to your child's school or your favorite nonprofit every time you went out to dinner, or every time you shopped online at retailers like Walmart or Chewy.com for your pup? Most of us here would agree that things are costing a lot more now, it's putting a big strain on families, and that's really having a big impact on how nonprofits and schools raise funds. Individual donations to PTA, schools, and nonprofits have dipped 32% since 2020, a time when schools need additional funds to raise student achievement from what educators call the COVID slide, that I'm sure you've all heard about. This is why we're launching GiveBacks for Education in Ormond Beach today. We've partnered with dozens of local restaurants and thousands of online retailers to raise more than $25,000 for seven Ormond Beach public schools this school year. GiveBacks will also be helping private schools that need funds as well. So here's how it works, it's simple, it's free to everyone. First, you sign up for the GiveBack Shop to Give app, you become a backer. Then you select a school you want to support, and you add your credit card. From then on, your school will get a donation every time you dine out or pay with that card at a GiveBacks restaurant. We're talking about Chick-fil-A, Fugu Sushi, I just went there, sent a dollar five cents to Beachside Elementary, excited about that. Thousands more participating across the U.S. Each school's backer generates over $50 per year, so if you just get a few hundred supporters to sign up for each school, their school could raise over $5,000 every year without fundraising, imagine. No more gift wrap, candy bars, all that good stuff, right? You may be thinking, it sounds a lot like Amazon Smile, right? Amazon Smile? Well, you may not know this, but Amazon Smile pulled the plug in February. They ended their charity program in February. The nonprofits and the schools know, but a lot of us who donated through Amazon Smile didn't know that, so that left a huge void, and, you know, we're hoping that Ormond Beach GiveBacks for Education could really help close those funding gaps for our schools this year. So to make that happen, we need backers. We need backers to sign up to support our schools. So each one of you received a flyer, tells you a little bit about how the program works, you see those great logos in there on participating restaurants so far. We hope to gain some more restaurants to participate in the program this fall. And to kick things off, my company, GiveBacks, is going to donate $5 to your school the first time you score a transaction. That's in addition to the 5% donation that comes off of the bill. So what we need from you guys is, you know, any help you could do, to share the word, you know, let's get as many backers as we can signed up for GiveBacks for Education and support our schools this year. And if you have any questions, on the back of the flyer, I've got my contact information, and also each one of the school's little QR code there, so you can sign up right now and then go to Neighborhood Scoop and get some ice cream after the meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Dylan. And Dylan and Alan, Alan, if you stand up. I've been working with you guys for about four months, trying to figure out the best way to support this, because I just like, I mean, when you open up the app, it says doing more without doing really anything other than downloading the app, connecting a card to it, and picking out which charity you want to support. Right now, you're focused on schools, which I think is fantastic. I'm supporting Kiwanis Reads, which helps Ormond Beach Elementary and maybe some other schools, depending on how much is raised, but when we last met, I think you showed me over a couple of months, just by people going to Chick-fil-A or, you know, driving through and grabbing some takeout from Rose Villa, whatever it is, 78 cents here, $1.50 there, they've raised $600 for Kiwanis Reads program, which is incredible, approximately $650. So the hard part is helping people realize how easy it is, and then as school's beginning, I think the QR code's going to help, but parents, Travis, you know, as well as anybody, and Lori, you as well, you're bombarded the first couple of weeks of school, so figuring out a way to get this to cut through and getting people to sign up for it. I went last night, I already had downloaded the app, but it just took less than a minute or two to pick out Kiwanis Reads as my charity, and there's a bunch of different charities you can choose. If you like the Casements Guild, if you like the Ormond Yacht Club, if you like Ormond Beach Soccer Club, Inc., whatever your particular charity is, I know y'all are focused on schools right now, and it'd be great to raise $5,000 for each of these different schools, but it's easy, and it's kind of a replacement for the Amazon Smile that did go away. So I hope we can figure out a way to encourage that. I know Commissioner Persis is all about schools, she's dedicated her life to schools, as has Commissioner Talland with her work on the PTA at Tamoka Elementary, also been heavily involved, so I think there's ways that we can figure out to help, and I'll ask Joyce and Randy, hopefully with the commission's support, to continue to look for ways that we can support this, and people can give back to their community in an easy, simple way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have a question, and I guess this goes to Dylan and to Alan. I know at the end of last school year, Ormond Elementary School, you gave a challenge to the kids to read over the summer, and I don't know if you have those numbers yet, I know, I think their prize for meeting the challenge was ice cream for a year or something like that every day, they wanted to over Neighborhood Scoops. Don't know if you have a number on that yet or not, you may not know until school starts, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have the official number, but I did talk to Principal Hay a couple weeks ago, and she said that she felt that they are way ahead of where they were last year at this time.
Fantastic.
So I'm already wanting to create a Neighborhood Scoop to start freezing up the ice cream. We're excited that's going to happen. But we'll be sure in about two weeks, we're going to have a big celebration over there and, you know, if they're going to get.
We're one of those ice cream? Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a question for you, Mayor. I'm not sure when is the appropriate time. It's not with you all, I think that's a great program.
Thank you.
The code enforcement, is that, I think there's a lot of ambiguity out of what we're allowed to do and what our officers can cannot do, and how it's complaint-driven, and I'm just wondering if there, when would be the appropriate time to have that information provided to residents and to the commission, and what could we possibly do? This is not the first time we've heard code enforcement, so.
I think the start would be for the residents to meet with the city manager and the police representative.
Okay.
And figure out exactly what the issues are. I know we get updates on the issues and what's going on, but I think they need to meet, and then hopefully something positive can come out of that.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to approval of minutes. These are the minutes from the city commission meeting of July 18th, 2023. They've been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I have approval submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. I'll show those passing unanimously. Community redevelopment agency. This is Agenda Item 7A. The following items are community redevelopment items. The city commission serves as the community redevelopment agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, we will recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. As chairman of the CRA, I'll open the public hearings and ask the secretary to read 7A by title, please.
Resolution Number 2023-120, a resolution of the city commission also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, accepting a bid from Latour Enterprises, Inc., DBA Economy Electric Company for construction services regarding the Downtown East Grenada Utility Undergrounding Project under bid number 2023-24, authorizing the execution of a contract payment therefore, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2023-120, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this item, is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to recommend approval of this item to the city commission, and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have a comment.
Mr. Mayor?
I brought this up before on our bidding process, and this is a prime example of why I think we need to reevaluate our, however we're doing our bidding process. Here we have a contract for almost a million dollars, and we got one person to respond. I just think that we need to, I don't know if things aren't getting out there, or what we can do to reevaluate this, but that's just my one.
No, yep, I hear you. And city manager, Joyce Shanahan.
We advertise all of our bids on something called DemandStar, so all a bidder has to do is go out there, people that are familiar with the process, all they have to do is go to DemandStar, there's all other local governments there, so there's plenty of bidders out there. I think this is just indicative of, number one, the type of work it is, and number two, it's a very tight market right now.
I get that, but a million dollars in one bid, that's just, you know, I guess people don't want to work.
It's, yeah, it's a difficult time in the economy. The engineer's estimate of probable cause for this project was $702,000, and the low bid came in at 991, 928, like you said, almost a million dollars. That just is an indication, and it's not just Ormond Beach, it's statewide, probably nationwide, because I hear it everywhere I go, talking to other mayors, talking to other city managers, it's just an extremely tight market, and anything that you thought you were going to do for a certain price is at least a third more, and that's very frustrating. Luckily, the funds are available to cover this, but, you know, it's frustrating that it's so much, so much more expensive. Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. And with that, we will close the public hearings, reconvene the city commission meeting, and move to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And at this time, if anyone wishes to comment, any commissioner wishes to comment on any of the consent agenda items? If not, we'll move to the public hearings, 9A. I'll open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read 9A by title.
Ordinance Number 2023-35, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts, and official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone a portion of a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 0.34 acres located at 145 North Young Street, Belushi County parcel number 4215-04-01-0270, from B-4 Central Business to planned business development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-35, read by title only.
Thank you, and this is a second reading. I don't have any cards other than the applicant who's here on A, B, and C if needed.
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-35.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 9B.
Ordinance Number 2023-36, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts, of official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone a portion of certain, a portion of a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 0.72 acres located at 145 North Young Street, Belushi County parcel number 4215-04-01-0270, from R-3, single-family medium-density to planned residential development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-36, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. Again, I don't have any cards on 9B.
Mr. Mayor, I have approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 9C.
Ordinance Number 2023-37, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for planned business development and planned residential development to be located at 145 North Young Street, Belushi County parcel number 4215-04-01-0270, to be known as the Ormond Enclave, authorizing the development of 64 multifamily residential units and associated site improvements under certain conditions, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-37, read by title only.
And again, second reading, no cards, just need a motion and a second.
Move approval of ordinance number 2023-37.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 9D.
Ordinance Number 2023-38, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts, and official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 0.76 acres located at 121 East Grenada Boulevard, Belushi County parcel number 4214-05-04-0051, from B-4 Central Business to planned business development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-38, read by title only.
Thank you, and the only card I have. Thank you. And the only card I have is from the attorney for the applicant, Rob Merrill, if needed, on DNE.
Mr. Mayor, I have approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, 9E.
Ordinance number 2023-39, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be located at 121 East Grenada Boulevard, Belushi County parcel number 4214-05-04-0051, to be known as 121 East, authorizing the development of 24 multifamily residential units and associated site improvements under certain conditions, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-39, read by title only.
Thank you. And again, no cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, 9F.
Ord- Ordinance number 2023-41, an ordinance amending chapter 1, general administration, article 3, definitions and acronyms, section 1-22, definitions of terms and words, chapter 2, district and general regulations, article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map, section 2-02, future land use map, designations and zoning districts, chapter 2, district and general regulations, article 2, district regulations, section 2-07, zoning district designations, chapter 2, district and general regulations, article 2, district regulations, section 2-33, I-2, reserved, chapter 2, district and general regulations, article 4, conditional and special exception regulations, section 2-57, criteria for review of specific conditional and special exception of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By creating the I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, providing use definitions and creating conditions for conditional and special exception uses, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-41, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And again, second reading. Stephen gave us all the background on this last time. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-41.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some discussion, yes. And Mr. Spraker, I have some questions for you, if you don't mind. And I apologize. All right. So I know this is the second reading and I, and planning board experience tells me when, well, let's, let's address this. So the city has never had an I-2 heavy industrial definition, correct?
Correct. It was planned back in the 2010 valuation appraisal report. There was acknowledgement along Hall Road. There are county properties that are zoned, Belushi County heavy industrial, and eventually they would want water and sewer connections. So they created a land use of heavy industrial and they created a zoning district as a reserve. Basically, when it came needed, we would be where we are tonight of creating that zoning district.
So when we chose to annex in Halifax paving, what was it in the county before?
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial?
Yep, Belushi County I-2.
And that's why we are creating that in the city of Ormond Beach?
Correct. So, so as the staff report explains, basically, we loosely based this I-2 off the county's I-2. We removed uses such as outdoor, special events, landfill, and some other uses which wouldn't be appropriate. Again, this district isn't meant to go citywide. It's meant to be very narrow and to basically recognize what the county has as, as property desire to connect the water and sewer, the city is required to annex it. So you have to have a similar zoning as what the county offered.
I wasn't sure what the county had it, had for Halifax paving. And, and I know that we've had this conversation and you know what my, where my concerns are. I don't know if it's appropriate at this point to make that discussion or not, Mayor. I have some concerns with future potential annexations of property that's aligned with Halifax paving. That would be an I-2 heavy industry. Is this the appropriate time to discuss that? Or would you prefer me to do it in my comments?
I mean, if you have concerns that you think can be addressed by doing something different with this ordinance, now would be the appropriate time.
Okay. And it, but it appears that we have, we're kind of handcuffed in, in that zone, right? So my, I guess my thought is, if we don't have to have an I-2 heavy industrial on the city, I would prefer that because I can see the domino effect of the adjacent, adjacent property, the Belvedere Fuel Farm that wants to come into the city eventually. That's been discussed as far as I can tell from my background work, at least for a good year, with the county and the city. And I feel like it's kind of a domino effect. When you, when you annex in a piece of property and you assign it, which we legally have to do, it kind of opens up that avenue for, for other properties to annex in and use that, that same use. My personal feeling, and I have a lot of concern, is with the fuel farm that potentially wants to annex in. I don't think it's a, something that I would want, you know, next to the airport sports complex, next to the Bear Creek residence. It's, it's described as having seven to 12 fuel trucks an hour moving along Harmony and Hall Road. I just can't see that as a nightmare with kids' practices, with, you know, the field use. I absolutely have no problem with Halifax paving. They've been here, they've been established, we built around them, you know, that, that's us. But for another entity to come in from the county with this type of use really concerns me, so.
Mr. Mayor. To Commissioner, to Commissioner Talland's point, something like that, say, for instance, the Halifax paving property, we didn't have an issue with that being I-2. But the fuel farm, and Stephen, you can correct me because I don't know, I'm just, I'm throwing this out there.
Yeah, this is good discussion.
Yeah, would we have to, a property like that, if we decided that we didn't want to see it as I-2, could we, you know, zone it or bring it in as I-1? Necessarily not having to keep exactly what the county had it at, because we've done that before. I mean, we've, we've tried to go as close to the county as possible. We annex properties from the county and give them the applicable city zoning. However, we found, as Commissioner Talland is pointing out, with concerns that it wouldn't be a compatible use with neighboring properties, could we bring it in as like an I-1? And then they would be, whatever their activity is, would be grandfathered until they were no longer using it for that purpose.
Right. So, so my opinion is city commission could do whatever they believe is appropriate, right? So you're the legislative body. But, so, so this item tonight is establishing a based zoning district. It doesn't have any, you know, sites associated, right? The property that you're talking at 7, 7, 874 Hall Road is in unincorporated Belushi County. They're, they're under the county's zoning and the use that they're seeking, which they haven't applied for yet, is, is a permitted use in the I-2. If, if the commission feels that the I-1 is appropriate, then you can do it at that time. The, the property owner may have issue with that because in essence, you're taking away the rights that they enjoyed in Belushi County and you're making them a non-conforming use.
And for that reason, he may not want to come in to the city.
They're not going to have a choice because, because goal five of your land use elements requires either annexation agreement or annexation. So, so they have to come in. And, and, and our comprehensive plan says they need to come in at a similar zoning and a similar use that had the county. And we've done that, Destination Daytona, we, we, we gave them the exact land use and zoning, Plantation Oaks, we took the development order of the county. So we've consistently, whatever the county has had, we've honored. So it's not good planning to make this area or to expand the I-1 to allow uses that you don't want allowed citywide. The city doesn't want to allow batching plants and landfills in the I-1. It's a very specific area that is already I-2 in the county that we are simply trying to match.
Mr. Mayor, I can, can I offer a few comments here?
Sure.
This is probably a discussion item that we need to have, excuse me, at a, at a subsequent meeting so that we can kind of focus on the matter before you. But to address some of the questions that have come up, if this were an area where there's no existing uses out there, no businesses, and you're planning it on paper for the first time, then you would have more latitude to determine whether you want to do I-2 or I-1. The difficulty is, these are established uses in the county. So we're required by law and your comp plan to give it a similar use to that which it enjoys in the county. The problem with trying to squeeze it into a different character than, or mold from what it currently exists is that in the process, you may end up taking away rights that currently exist, right? And under the expansive preemption laws that have been adopted by the Florida Legislature toward local governments, if you adopt a regulation that in effect takes, takes away rights that previously property owners enjoyed, you may open yourself up to some litigation. And so it seems like a, a question that should have an easy answer, but it's not, unfortunately. If you want to have a broader discussion, we probably ought to spill it over onto a separate agenda item. But it's going to be very difficult to do. Like, I can, I can tell you that right, right now. But what you have before you this evening is consistent with the comp plan and your obligations under the statute as it relates to this particular piece of property, so.
May I ask one more question of Mr. Spraker? Thank you. And I understand what you were saying. I was waiting for you to come in and just tell me what the deal was. But the question, the, the, the que-, if, if when we get down to that point and, and we, and we chose not to annex in, that means the county would have to provide their own water and infrastructure, correct? Does, is that usually a very costly thing where possibly they wouldn't want to come?
So, so if, if a property in unincorporated Belushi County connects to city utilities, in order for the connection to occur, you have to do one of two things. Either they have to annex because they're, they're touching the city, they're contiguous, or they have to sign an annexation agreement that says when they are contiguous, that they'll annex. So the city doesn't really have the option of, of not annexing properties. You know, you can delay it, you know, maybe you don't do it right away, but at some point, you need to annex it. And, and until you annex it, they maintain the county's I-2, which, which they have today. So Halifax paving hasn't been, hasn't been rezoned because we don't have a zone to go to. So they maintain their county I-2 until the city takes action to rezon it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? 9F, I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-41.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, 9G.
Ordinance number 2023-42, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of one parcel of real property totaling 0.24 plus or minus acres located at 204 Magnolia Drive, Belushi County parcel number 4214-20-02-0011, from public institutional to low-density residential, providing for conflict authorizing transmittal and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-42, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, 9H.
Ordinance number 2023-43, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of a portion of one parcel of real property totaling 5.2 plus or minus acres located at 901 Airport Road, Belushi County parcel number 4238-01-40-0010, from light industrial utilities to open space conservation, providing for conflict authorizing transmittal and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-43, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, no cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-43.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, 9I.
Ordinance number 2023-44, an ordinance annexing six parcels of real property into the city of Ormond Beach. Said property located south of Pennsylvania Avenue, west of Plantation Oaks Boulevard and east of Interstate I-95. Belushi County parcel numbers 3136-01-09-0001, 3136-01-08-0010, 3136-01-07-0010, An annexing portions of the Indiana Avenue right-of-way, Benton Street right-of-way, and Rosemary Street right-of-way, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, re-designating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, setting for, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-44, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask planning director Stephen Spraker to speak on this item.
Good evening. This is the annexation of a property known as Bradford Park. The property is located along Plantation Oaks Boulevard. Here is US 1, located here, Plantation Oaks Boulevard. This is the unopened right-of-way of Pennsylvania. So they're looking to do a townhouse subdivision here. It is going through a site planning and review committee. It'll come to both the planning board and the city commission through a preliminary plat. This is part of the inter-local service boundary agreement. Because they are connecting to water and sewer, they are required to annex. Staff is recommending approval and the applicant's or the property owner's representative is here if there's any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen or the property owner's rep? I don't have any cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we will close the public hearings and start with reports, suggestions, and requests with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to remind you that we will be celebrating the retirement of Officer Gregory Stokes after more than 20 years of service at 11:00 a.m. on August 3rd. We invite you all to attend at the police department. In preparation for hurricane season, public work staff has had 30 tons of sand delivered to Nova Rec and have notified residents through social media that bags are available for pickup. They can have 10 bags and they can begin self-bagging at this time. When there is a storm in the Atlantic and it's approaching, we do begin staffing those sandbag bagging areas so that we can make sure it runs efficiently. We encourage our residents to look at the social media account because sandbags alone aren't enough to stop water from getting into your house. You have to have that vapor barrier and there's a very good video available to take a look at, so we encourage them to do that. It's better to get ready earlier than later, so we encourage you, if you have some time, to head your way up to Nova Rec to get your sandbags. I think you need your driver's license to go inside and they'll give you 10 bags. I think you need your driver's license to go inside and they'll give you ten bags. Now, you might not need ten bags, and ten bags are pretty heavy. And the reason we limit you to ten bags is because we don't want you to bust the rear end out of your car. So you might have to come back a couple times if you need one of that. The last of the South Beach street sidewalks should be completed next week. You know, we had a lot of that damage during Hurricane Ian Nicole. I'm really proud of our public works department. They did all that work themselves. They, they brought in all the riprap. They broke it all out and related. And that portion that was a wooden walkway, they replaced that with concrete. So they really did an outstanding job, and I'm really proud of them. I don't know if you saw them working earlier this summer, but it was hot as Hades out there, and they were working up a storm, and they did great work, so I'm really proud of them. Movies on the Halifax on August fourth will feature The Princess Diaries, a really great movie if you haven't seen that. A lot of fun. First Saturday Art Walk at the Casement's on August fifth from three till seven PM. And the Casement Summer Story Stroll starts, begins from July seventeenth through August eighteenth. Lastly, I would like to ask the commission for a capital budget workshop at your next meeting. I have a history of your calendar. August fifteenth at five thirty so we can review some of those capital items that you asked us to bring back, a priority list. For those of you in your budget capital book, the last tab, I think it's fourteen, there's a list of all those unfunded projects. Staff has been providing that list of unfunded projects for, I don't know, the last ten years or so. Those are projects that have been raised, but there's been no ability to make those a priority due to lack of funding. So we'll review that and get your direction on those, if that's okay with everyone.
Finally.
And any questions for me?
Any questions for Joyce? I had just one, Joyce.
Just one clean getaway.
Sandbags?
Yes.
People fill those things all the way up, and I don't think you're supposed to do that. Do we on our social media post the video that Jim Judge from the county did that him and his assistant show actually how you should fill a sandbag and properly place it?
Yes.
I only knew because Joyce and I met with Jim Judge out at the EOC, so thank you for that meeting, Joyce. And, you know, some people might think it's a little boring, but it's important to know.
No, it's really a great video, and you're right, you can't even lift them if you fill them all the way up, but it's, that's not what the whole bag is for.
Great.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Thanks. Have a great night.
Thank you. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start commission comments with Commissioner Persis.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few comments this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for these chargers we have here up here on the dais. We can charge our iPads and our iPhones, so thank you very much. That's a new addition. I appreciate that very much. And regarding the comments that we got for Give Back for Education, I was wondering if, what the commission thought about maybe putting all that information on our website. Is that something we could do? I think that would be great. Is that okay?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I, along with several other commissioners, we attended the swearing-in of a new Ormond Beach police officer, another female. I was very proud to be there. And we gave her a lot of support. She's very excited to join, you know, the best police officers and best police department, I think, in the state of Florida at least. So thank you all for that, and everyone have a good and safe evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Persis, Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll keep it very brief. I too, along with Commissioner Persis and Commissioner Sargent, attended the swearing-in of Officer Edmonds, I believe, at the police department last week, and we welcome her to, again, I agree with Commissioner Persis, the finest law enforcement office, or agency in Volusia County. I think she'll, she'll fit right in, and y'all will, y'all will do her well. And then the other thing I have is I want to thank Sean Finley and our public works folks. Thank you so much for the flashing pedestrian sign around Hand Avenue that the folks have been kind of asking about. It kind of helps bring some attention to that crosswalk there where the utility box kind of hides the folks coming out the street. So thank you for doing that, and, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Talland?
I only have ten pages tonight. Just kidding. Only one. And they're not in any particular order. But I do want to, I just want to say that I am looking forward to meeting with staff in the next couple of weeks regarding the Casson Park design. Talked with Joyce this morning, and she told me that we, they'll be reaching out to us. And I'm looking forward to that. That's a long overdue project, so I'm, I'm excited about that. Another topic I know I have talked with staff about before, and I don't think there's a whole lot we can, we do about it, but I've been getting a lot of phone calls about residents expressing their dismay with MetroNet and how they're destroying their, their properties, another one today. And Joyce, if you want to...
Just so you know.
Explain.
The, the Florida Legislature limits how we can control those right-of-way permits. In fact, we're required to issue those right-of-way. Maybe Sean can come up and give you some detail about how we've been proceeding. Been, not for the record.
And maybe one step further, maybe we could put it on our web, or some information. It's affecting everybody, you know, just kind of, if, if the commission agrees, I don't know.
We have something ready to go for the website, so we're ahead of that.
Perfect. It's just a lot of question out there, and they think that it's us, and...
I'll let Sean speak to it because we've had many discussions about this crazy process.
Thank you for asking a question. And, you know, and this MetroNet is, is something we haven't really seen. It's, I liken it to when cable television came through in the early nineteen eighties where we're actually adding a utility to, to areas where we haven't ever had it before. And so this is a very widespread, and so we're having to spend a lot more time with this group than we have in the past. We meet with them regularly. We've met with them regularly. We have, just to give you a little bit of information about our process, we have three engineering inspectors, and we divide the city up into three different zones. And so each one of those zones has its own inspector, so we have them going out there. That's kind of the point of contact for the residents as well as, as the, as MetroNet. We are in communication with them on a daily basis to, to make sure that they locate correctly, make sure that they do as best a job as they can to restore. That being said, as monumental of a job as they're taking, and they, they were focusing on this area north of Granada between US one and D Street, I think that they're now working in the trails. We, the last meeting we had with them was about three weeks ago. And we had a little bit of a heart-to-heart with them and said, listen, you've gotten out of control. You're going a lot faster than, not even so much that we can handle, but that we feel that you can handle. And so they, they've, they told us that they have cut back. And so the daily list that I see of the streets that they're working on, it's gone from about three or four different streets to one street, which I think is going to help them out. They've committed to cutting back and letting go of some of their, the subcontractors who aren't living up to what their expectations were. The problem that we have here is that MetroNet is the first of three fiber optic contractors or services that are going to be coming through. Wire Three was one that we, that we approved the registration for a couple of weeks ago. And we're getting ready to approve one for, for LiveWire, HotWire, I'm sorry. So it's a third one. And that's going to be a very challenging thing for all of us because whereas we've got residents who, who brought to our attention, why are they coming through my streets? They just went through and did this, and that was the AT&T operation when they came through, through a couple of years ago. I, we're going to foresee that this, that Wire Three is going to come through, that same one, the third one's going to come through, and we're going to see redundancy. So what we've done with the second group, Wire Three, is we've scheduled a meeting and told them we need a master plan. We need to know where you're going to be, what your schedule is, where you're going, and, and, and what the timing is for that. We're going to do that with MetroNet as well. We're going to make them come back in retroactively because we don't want them stepping on each other's toes. We don't want to have to, to blame everybody for something that someone did. We don't want anything negative to happen to begin with, so we really want to have a good control of this one. I think that we've had pretty receptive from MetroNet. The amount of work that, the, the number of issues that we've seen is a little vindictive of the speed and the amount of areas that they've been. That being said, any, any problem is, is a problem. We've had, the majority of the hits that they've had on our utilities have been service side, and those have been pretty easy to fix. They've been very receptive in getting those fixed and paying us to get them fixed. So I think that we've got a pretty good working relationship. But one thing that we always ask them is try and be good neighbors and minimize the impact on, on, on our residents. And, you know, with that last meeting, we, we spoke to them and said, if you're having issues with the residents, think of how this is going to market your service. And I think that that's hitting close to home with them, and hopefully, you know, they, they will continue to do it. I think that the past three weeks have been better than the preceding three weeks. Hopefully, these next three weeks will continue to do better. Hopefully, when we have two or three different utilities in, in town, all working towards the same goal, they will not step on each other's toes and they will work together. You know, if we, if, if we have to have a meeting where we bring representatives from all three of those in there to make them understand that you're going to have to, your, your, your speed, the ability that you have to work through town is going to be a little bit limited by the fact that you've got two other competitors who are trying to do the same thing. So we're trying to spend as much time on these, on these folks as we can. We're reaching out to them. We've been working with Jen for about a month now to really get a good message out. They've got, they've got websites, but obviously they come to us first. If we have a website, if we have a webpage on our site, they can link to them. They can provide some of those, those, those answers to those questions. We're able to, when someone calls my office, I can have, I can have Deanna or Kristen point them to our website. And that, and that makes it easier for us to give links. So these are all things that we're, we're thinking about. Any other ideas anybody has to help it out, we're, we're open to it. But, you know, the most important thing is making sure that we minimize the impact on residents and, and that, you know, life goes on. Hopefully, hopefully, we're doing our best, and hopefully, we can get these people to do their best. And if, if you do hear complaints or, or concerns from residents, continue to let me know because, because that, that's, that's really the best way. You know, I, I tell everyone, we're not, we don't not want to hear from our residents because our residents are the eyes and ears. You, you know what's happening on your street better than I will ever know. And so if you can let me know or encourage the residents to let me know, we're going to, we're going to look into it. We're going to try and do our best to get these people out.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Talland, if I, just a quick question for Sean. I know we can't regulate a lot of this, this right-of-way stuff, but with these three carriers or utilities coming online and coming through Ormond Beach, is there any sort of way for like, an opportunity for like, and you can tell me if this is possible or not. I might be thinking, you know, way out of left field, but like a shared conduit? Where they can all use the same, where they're not having to tear up everything when they come back in? They can just kind of feed it through existing conduit? I mean, obviously, someone has to take the lead to put it in.
I think that's, that's a great idea, and I, I would hope that some of these folks would talk to one another to realize that there's a common goal here. The, the, the laws allow them to co-locate on, on aerial, aerial facilities on trucks. So it's similar to the same type of thing. There may be a little bit of, of posturing that, that one does amongst one another and not want to share conduit and, 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 and hope that I get in that area first, I get the customers. You see that, you see, your analysts look and see that I've got twenty-five percent of people in here. I'm not going to, not going to crack that nut, so I'm not going to go with that anyway. So I'm sure that there's a lot of things in there, but...
It may be a part of our idea, but...
It's a great idea. I, I thought about, I, you know, I wish we could, I wish one of them would come to us and say, Sean, I'd love, I'd love to allow you to put fiber optic in our conduit for your use. I know that that's a good idea. But, you know, they're, they're, we're trying our, our hardest really to keep them under control and to stay one step ahead of them before, before things go wrong.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I just have a couple more thoughts then. Thank you, Sean. On Friday, August eleventh, twelve thirty to two, the Regrow the Loop will have a presentation on pollinators in case anybody's interested. Jen, thank you so much for putting the Regrow the Loop on the, on our social media. I appreciate it very much. And anybody that wants to find any information can just go on the Volusia County website or ours. That will link it to them. I understand, Stephen, I just want to say I do understand. I'm just disappointed. I just wish there was something else we could do. I feel like our hands are tied. And I, I know you do a very good job, and I do understand the process. I was just hoping I could find some kind of loophole in the process. You know, maybe I'll boycott at the county level or something crazy like that, but anyway. I, I do appreciate what you do, and, you know, I just ask these questions because I'm just not happy with it. Let's see, the last thing is, it is getting to be the end of the summer. I hope everybody has a very safe summer and as we transition to school. I think the Give Back was a cool idea, and thank you for, Mayor, for bringing that up and Susan for putting that idea on our social media. I think that's a great, great idea. And with all of that, I'm sure you guys will be pleased. I'm going to say good night and God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Talland, Commissioner Sargent.
Oh, first, I'd like to say thank you to Chris Mason and staff for handling the code issues on Melrose, Womet, and others that we've had in the area. I guess I'm, after today's incident, incident on Melrose, I'm really concerned about the safety of our code enforcement officers going out there. Is there the ability for them to have body cameras or? I'm just thinking for their protection because this went on for about twenty, thirty minutes, is my understanding today.
Ways to make sure that they're safe.
Okay, thank you. And also, could we include information in the utility bills, a QR code, something about the code, neighborhood improvement stuff, something to get the word out there? I know we don't want to put pamphlets in. That'd be pretty costly, but maybe if there was something in the utility bill. Just like a QR code that would, would bring them to where the pamphlet is on code enforcement? Does that make sense? I think there's two pamphlets, but it would just, they could scan on their bill and then see.
And what would be the purpose of that? Just...
So people could understand.
The process?
My one neighbor, he had no idea that he needed to put up a fence to block in some stuff.
Gotcha. So what, you're talking about what the ordinances are within the city?
Where to park, where not to park. It's just a kind of informational.
I've had a lot of questions of that with people in my zone as well. That would be, anytime we can educate is, is a good thing.
Greg Stokes, I know he's not here tonight, but unfortunately, I'll be out of town and will not be able to attend that on the third. What is the update? I know Commissioner Talland said, but what is the update on the Ormond bait shop, Casson Park?
I have no update yet, but they're finalizing their design, and then we'll have individual meetings with you, and then we'll have a workshop, maybe next couple or three weeks.
So this is new design from when we had the, I don't know, the four or five, a couple of years ago?
It's not a new design. It's based on what you all gave us direction, and they're putting that in there. You all stated you want to keep the off-street parking. You wanted to prioritize the boat parking. You didn't want the playground, so that's incorporating all of those things.
Great. Again, thanks to staff for helping the Easy Does It Club with their parking issue by putting in the parking area at the end of the, I think it's Young Street or Ridgewood. But I, I just feel like now is the time that we have to start enforcing the parking there. It's still an issue. They're not abiding by it. I get texts every morning, every afternoon, and every evening with people parked the wrong ways, people parked in the street. They're just parked everywhere. We went above and beyond for them, and now's the time that I think we just need to start issuing warnings and then tickets.
We did have a conversation. I know Chief Godfrey was meeting with Corey Romanek, and explained that once that got in, that we would start issuing warnings and then citations. So we were giving it about a two window to do that.
Thank you, because enough is enough. We went way above and beyond. And as Commissioner Persis and Deputy Mayor Bryley said, congratulations and welcome to Officer Melissa Edmonds, our newest member of the police department. It was a great swearing-in ceremony. I was fortunate to attend, and with that, I will say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. And a great article in The Observer today about the swearing-in for Officer Edmonds with some nice pictures of Commissioner Persis, Commissioner Sargent, Deputy Mayor Bryley, Captain Roos as well. I like Captain Roos's quote where he described Officer Edmonds as a forgiving person and a very patient person. And he indicated that's a great attribute for police officers to have. So that's just a short synopsis of that. And I know the Volusia League of Cities met in DeBery last Thursday evening. I know some of you attended that. Great meeting. DeBery was very proud to show off their city and some of the exciting things that are happening there on the west side of the county. And Sheriff Chitwood was the speaker. He gave some important updates, not only about some of the anti-Jewish community hatred that he's been fighting against, and we've been supporting him in the fight against over the last year. over the last year or two, but also on an important series of educational events that he and his department are doing for parents and grandparents on recognizing the social media issues that are out there for their children and grandchildren. And they're starting that on the west side. I believe they're going to make it over to the east side as well, and so Joyce, I would